I don't want to. We're not doing it. We're gonna do that though. There was an error. Bottom dogs. I don't know why the bell rang in the morning. All game, go. We got three and a half. Uh, let's say, let's say.
We have two zooming.
I'm glad.
Hmm.
Now, definitely.
Well, now I call to order the December ninth, twenty twenty four, City of Abilene, Kansas City Commission Meeting, Shaila May or Kelly, may we please have roll call? That is a habit. I need a break then.
Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Yeah.
Commissioner what?
Here.
Commissioner Koloff. Commissioner Meisenberg.
Here.
Roll calls complete.
All right, we'll be standing for blood.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British Empire, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, and our first item is approval of today's agenda.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would like to remove from the consent agenda the item five B. If you would entertain that and move that to seven E.
Okay. The motion.
That is a motion.
And I'll second.
Motion has been moved in second. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing done, we'll move to roll call vote. Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff.
Hi.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is the consent agenda, which now only consists of the meeting minutes from the November twenty fourth or twenty fifth, twenty twenty four regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the meeting minutes from only from the November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four regular meeting.
Second.
Motion has been moved in second. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing done, we'll roll call vote. Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff.
Hi.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Next.
Uh, before we get to that, is it all right if we do that now? Or do you want to do public communication? I guess I'd like to make the motion for the executive session. I just want to make sure it fits in before the business items, but at at wherever you'd like it, I guess. I think it's appropriate anywhere.
Sure. Um, I would be probably after public comments communications. Um, I'd be fine doing it first or right before that business item either.
Yeah.
Either one is fine with me whenever you would like to make it.
Thank you.
All right. Item six A is public comments communications. We have a public forum. Um, if there's anyone that would like to address the commission on an item not on the agenda, they may do so at this time. Do we have anyone that would like to address the commission on an item not currently on the agenda? Okay, seeing done, we'll move into business items. Seven A resume public hearing from September twenty third, twenty twenty four, for the purpose of showing cause why the structure located at sixteen oh one West First Street in Abilene, Kansas should not be condemned and ordered repaired or demolished. I will now open that public hearing. City Inspector Stearman first.
Uh, Roger started the work uh over there. Uh, in your packets, there's a picture that was taken. That was the last, I believe, Tuesday when I got that picture. I have uh pictures that were taken today at right before ten o'clock this morning. I was going to give you.
Thank you. Yeah.
Uh, Roger started on the southeast section of the roof. Um, and that is as far as he's gotten with with the pictures to tell you. Um, you guys have any questions for me?
Roger, did you want to speak as well?
Actually didn't think I'd be here not done. Um, been awful tough finding any help. I've agreed to hire eleven people in the since we last met. I've had one eleven year old work thirty hours. I've had one handicap, ex-police officer who's working on the roof right now. He can work about ten, twelve hours a week. And he's he's done for. The rest of it is me. There is nobody out here to hire that I've been able to find. Uh, we've agreed to hire people. They don't show. They are wanting a no, you don't have work, so we can get unemployment. Uh, we're just plugging along on it. Uh, the structure appears to be sound. What we've taken off, the decking appears to be in good shape. We are taking it all the way down to the uh to the lumber or down to the the sheeting. And then uh re-shading, reshingling it uh with one layer on that. Uh, honestly thought I'd be done. I'm not, and I'm guessing it's probably going to take a couple of more months because of the weather. Uh, the city did require us to pull a new permit for it. We did pull that last week. Uh, so we are within the legal permit, uh, although it is an extended or a new permit. So any questions?
So we're looking at this last public hearing date of September twenty third, and you just stated that you just pulled up new roofing permit last week?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
So you really only worked on it for the last week?
No, we've been your work, your permits are a little bit strange in this city. I'll be quite honest. Uh, we have a state roofing license because your city does not re does not honor the state law. As the state roofing people tell me it is. A general contractor, I hold a general contractor's license. General contractors are exempt from state roofing license when they do less than fifty percent of their work in roofing. We do significantly less than our work roof work in roofing. Your city does require us to have a roofing contract. So therefore, we had to go to the state and pick up a roofing license through the state of Kansas. That was additional time and additional expense on our part. We did that. Uh, your city has apparently uh a ninety day limit on any one permit. For roofing, you don't continue, so we had to buy another permit because the ninety days had expired, and that was done uh last week. So we are within a permit on that. So it appeared to me that since we're in a in a permit and moving forward, that probably we'll just see if you would agree to to do a status hearing at your next commission meeting or two meetings down.
Do we have any other questions for Mr. Seymour or? Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to address during the public forums action?
One, one. Uh, Roger's a little off on the permitting. The reason his permits that he pulled in April weren't valid is because he didn't start to work within thirty days. That's why we got had a new permit and a new building permit was done.
I would tend to disagree. Definition of starting may be different. Getting material to the project, getting material, getting roofing material and getting material necessary for the work would constitute starting. We did that within the thirty days.
Do we have anyone else that would like to address a question during the public forum? Okay, seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. We'll now move to item seven B, consider approval of resolution twelve zero nine two four dash one, a resolution finding that the structure located at sixteen oh one West First Street, Abilene, Kansas is unsafe and dangerous in directing the structure to be repaired or removed and the premises made safe. We don't have anyone listed on this item. I would assume City Inspector Stearman would take this if there's any technical questions. Okay. Do you have any questions for staff?
I I guess I will ask a question here if that's okay. Uh, Travis, what do you think the likelihood is that this gets completed? And what's a reasonable timeframe for for completing it?
Uh, I'm I'm just going to speak the truth. Um, this is, I've I've been here seven years and I've been dealing with it for six. Um, I in my opinion, Roger showing complete and disrespect for the city's uh city's rules and regulations. So um, I I would uh like to believe that would get done. Uh, the past has shown differently.
I guess I'd be curious what my fellow commissioners think about an extension. I don't think if it ceases to be Mr. Seymour's problem, it becomes a city's problem.
Is my my personal thought process on it is by passing the um resolution, it does give a completion date of March thirty one. Is that correct? There's a time period of, I can't remember the exact date. This city attorney Martin, are you looking at that real quick?
Yeah, that's in the section.
Just trying to find it again.
Yes, I was pulling it up. The the procedure requires that you make a finding whether it's dangerous and unsafe. If you make that finding, then you are to set a deadline by which you must commence to make the repairs. And then under the statute, he must be provided a reasonable time, and as long as he is diligently pursuing the repairs or demolition, in his judgment, whichever is appropriate, uh, he can continue that work. If that work ever stops, uh, the city has the ability to make the repairs itself or demolish it itself or through retained contractors. In this case, staff has inserted what I believe is March thirty thirty first deadline for completing the repairs. Typically, when we get to that point, I would always recommend, I think, you know, the city commission would award a contract for the demolition should it get that far, and uh there would be another opportunity for it to come back before you. But this, if adopted, provides the owner with an opportunity to finish the work within the timeframes. And uh whether it's stated in the resolution or not, if the owner is diligently pursuing the work, we're obligated to allow that to continue before uh demolishing the property.
Is there any explanation for what diligent looks like?
That term is used in the statute and it is not defined. I think there's cases where someone uh doesn't obtain the necessary building permit or work ceases for a prolonged period of time. I think it's very fact specific, and I think you have uh you would be deferred to by any reviewing court based on the facts that you considered at the time. Uh, so it's hard for me to describe all the facts that could lead you to determine that the owner was not diligent, but generally that would look like not obtaining the necessary permits, allowing weeks or months to go by without working or attempting to work, things of that nature.
And does that timeframe change if we continue this hearing, say thirty days?
The dates in the resolution can be whatever dates you wish for them to be. So yes, if this matter comes back before you in a month or sixty days or whenever, it would be appropriate to update the dates.
I guess what I'm saying is if we were to continue the hearing for thirty days and leave those dates the same, um, let's say when we hear it again in thirty days, would that still be a reasonable timeframe? Does that make sense?
That is a fact specific analysis, and I think if uh, Mr. Stearman believes they're reasonable today, I expect that they may not be reasonable if looked at in sixty days. Um, but I don't know. It's a function of how long uh you believe the work needs to be pursued until completion, and the facts may change that if nothing is done between now and sixty days. Uh, you know, that's four, four months from today to complete the work. If nothing occurs between now and January, uh, many to restart the four month clock. But.
I guess my hope is that those all the work would be complete in thirty or sixty days and not have to actually go through the process of um finding it to be a dangerous structure. I guess that's what I'm looking at is that if we give him thirty or sixty or whatever the commission might agree to to complete those, at that point, there should be no necessity of actually continuing this resolution. That's my, that's my thought process. Is that consistent with what you believe?
Yeah, the the what's making this building a danger structure and what it what is the roof? I mean, mostly there is what I also like the the soffit needs work that is to me is the roof work. Like it's it's all in that same general vicinity of the of the uh structure.
Do we have any other questions for city staff?
I'm agreeable to either extending the um hearing out in thirty, sixty days or or um go ahead and adopting this um setting that um uh, March thirty first completion date. Um, either one, it effectively does the same thing for us is keeping track of the property and eventually making sure that it it gets repaired. So um, I I'm agreeable to either.
My my preference is to just extend it out maybe sixty days and avoid having to go through the resolution if possible. I know that either way we have the same outcome, but given the inclement weather that may be coming up and then the staffing shortage, I feel that um it's appropriate, and I have been stopping by the property um just as recent as this weekend, and I do see that an effort has been made. So I'm in favor of extending it out and seeing what, if any, progress can be made at that time.
So then we'd be looking at first meeting in February.
I think revisiting this. I guess something that I want to be clear about as I'm remembering, uh, Travis, you shook something loose in my head. I think when we had the first meeting about this back in September, my expectation was that the roof would be buttoned up by now. I think we pushed, we were going to do it in October. It was going to be in November. There were some conflicts with timing. It got pushed back to December. And I guess I just want to make sure that I'm clear about my expectations, and that is if we extend it sixty days now before declaring it dangerous, that we're still looking at March thirty first as the the completion date for any for any work. So I mean, in a in a best case scenario, uh, Mr. Seymour has a hundred and twenty days to do that. And again, there's some other processes we're going to have to follow, but um I had a fourteen thousand square foot roof replaced. I've got another six thousand square foot roof roof that's uh been replaced really since the end of November. Travis, you might remember what the dates are specifically, but it was in pretty short order, and so I'm I'm having trouble buying the labor argument.
And this might be a question for city attorney Martin. Um, if we do kick that out sixty days right now, if we kept the public hearing open, um, and I I think you already alluded to this, that you don't have all the specific facts to make a decision, but uh would we still be able to keep that March thirty first date?
Yes, Commissioner Kohlhoff's comments kind of clarified what I think he was wanting to accomplish, and it may be helpful. So the statute that we're operating under provides that we will set one deadline, and that is the deadline to commence the work. And then the statute provides that as long as the owner diligently pursues that to completion, they're good. It is very common for cities, as we've done here, to establish what staff perceives as a reasonable deadline, with the expectation that it'll come back before the city commission before any demolition actually occurs. So that outside completion date is within your judgment, and I believe that whatever you believe is reasonable would be uh appropriate. And today, that's a four month deadline from today. If we come back in February and you determine it necessary to adopt a resolution with the March thirty first deadline, that would be sixty days. There's been advanced notice of that. So as long as uh you all determine a person could reasonably complete a roof repair in sixty days, having been warned about it in advance, you know, December ninth, uh, that would be appropriate to do. Yes.
That was my question. I didn't want to get to that point where kicking it off, kicking the can down another sixty days, and then we have to kick that date back another sixty days as well. That was my biggest concern with uh, ex or yeah, extending it versus just passing the resolution today. I'm amenable to that.
Yeah, I'm agreeable to revisiting the hearing and first meeting in February with the intent of the roof's not complete, then um keeping that March thirty first deadline and adopting the resolution at that first meeting in February.
That emotion.
Yes.
I will, I will second that motion. And just to discuss that motion very clearly and make sure Mr. Seymour understands what I think our intention is here, and that is that the roof is complete on February tenth of twenty twenty five, and that if the roof is not complete on February tenth of twenty twenty five, that we will pass the danger structures ordinance, and then under that ordinance, you would have under until March thirty first to complete that, to complete those repairs. I think that's I'm understanding that correctly.
Yes, I think that's appropriate motion.
Good. Motion has been moved in second. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing done, we'll roll call vote. Commissioner Koloff.
Hi.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. Our next item is consider approval of resolution number twelve zero nine two four dash two, a resolution providing for an adjustment to the pay plan of the City of Abilene, Kansas to ensure appropriate compensation for city employees as compared with the comparable labor market. Commander Marsh.
Uh, Commissioners and Shales gone. This is the, excuse me, the uh adjustment to the twenty twenty five pay plan that has been um discussed for the last several months.
Questions for staff on that item?
I move to approve resolution twelve nine twenty four dash two, a resolution providing for an adjustment to the pay plan of the City of Abilene, Kansas.
I'll second that.
Motion has been moved in second. Do we have any further commission discussion?
I do want to have just a little discussion here. I mentioned that I had kind of chewed up this data a little bit, and um after our last meeting and some of the input from uh city attorney Martin, it became pretty clear to me that disseminating that to this to you folks outside of a public meeting is probably against the letter and the spirit of the Kansas Open Meeting and Kansas Open Records Act. Um, and so that's why I did not prepare those. I did bring those. Um, but if you're going to pass it anyway, you can just take them home and use them to start your fire.
But do you want to disperse them?
There is a whole bunch of.
There is a whole bunch of
city attorney Martin, moving forward, is there an option to get this information out to us?
Yes, I appreciate Fisher cloth being mindful of coma as we attempt to share information that may be relevant. The key is not to have interactive communications among commissioners, and that can lead to inadvertent violations of coma. If two commissioners talk and then one goes out and talks to a, a third, then all of a sudden you have a majority of the commission talking not at the same time, but about the same subject, and that violates coma. But in the future, uh, one option is, you know, there's nothing that prevents a commissioner from providing information to, uh, the city manager's office or anyone on staff to then distribute. That is not a communication from a commissioner to other commissioners, and that would be appropriate to share information.
Can you explain that? Because I would view that if I make a, a communication to city manager Marsh, and he communicates that to all the other commissioners, to me, that's the definition of a serial meeting.
Well, we do not have a majority of the city commission talking interactively with the objective of reaching consensus on any business item. It's a resource information that is being distributed, just like all of the other information in the agenda packet that goes out to all of you, uh, but it doesn't reflect an attempt to reach a consensus by a majority of you. So I think if it comes from one, routed through the city manager's office to all five, uh, that's simply information being shared as a resource as opposed to, you know, any behind the scenes, uh, communication amongst and interactive amongst three commissioners, and it, I don't know if I'm explaining that very well, but it's very common to, for uh, the city manager, or even me sometimes to send you all just information, but it usually is accompanied by a directive not to discuss it with one another. And so even if we pursue that model that I just described, where staff sends you some information as a resource, it's very important you don't discuss that amongst yourselves, or you don't reply all to an email where you share with others your thoughts or proposals on it, because that's how you inadvertently find yourself talking amongst each other, trying to reach a consensus. So I, I think that would be the way to do it, and uh, there's nothing wrong with that.
Do we have any further commission discussion on this item?
And I should clarify really quickly. I'm talking about purely information, data such as this. I think that's to be distinguished from a communication that, you know, communicates a plan or a proposal, and I think I haven't seen this yet, but I understand it's just raw data.
Any further commission discussion?
I guess just so for the benefit of those who don't have a copy of this, I guess I would request that this go into the, uh, minutes of our meeting, please. I think our city employees are very well paid. Um, and if you look at the data, we're above average on almost everything, and in the top ten percent out of the seventy seven class two cities in the state. So I just, um, I think that's important, uh, maybe for our employees to know they're, they're well taken care of. And um, I think it's important for us to kind of keep an eye on this. I don't, I don't really prefer the shotgun approach uh, where we're just raising everybody a certain percent. I think there's probably our employees on the lower end that probably need to go up more and um, maybe less so on the higher end. But I think maybe we need to be a little more surgical with this in the future.
Do we have any further commission discussion on this item? None, I didn't know, didn't motion?
It's already been moved and seconded.
Yeah, sorry. I lost my place. My apologies. I think the information being handed out messed with me a little bit. All right. If there's no further commission discussion, we'll move into roll call vote. Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohloff?
Aye.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is seven D, consider approval of ordinance number two four dash three four five five, an ordinance authorizing the city of Abilene, Kansas to issue its taxable industrial revenue bond series twenty twenty four Golden Belt West Multi Family LLC for the purpose of the acquisition, construction, furnishing and equipping of a commercial facility and authorizing other related documents and actions. City manager Marsh?
Commissioners, this is the industrial revenue bond, uh, issuance for the sales tax exemption for Golden Belt West Multi Family LLC that was discussed by Dominic Eck from Gomorren Bell last meeting. Just recommend approval of the ordinance so these can get issued and that wrapped up by the end of the year.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number two four dash three four five five.
My second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to roll call vote. Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohloff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is seven E. Approval of the twenty twenty five cereal malt beverage license renewals.
Yes, I would, um, as soon as I can find it. I would move the city commission reset into executive session for ten minutes to discuss with the legal counsel certain issues related to the consideration of cereal malt beverage license renewal based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney client relationship pursuant to KSA forty five dash seventy three nineteen B two. Open meeting will resume in this room at four forty one P M.
And I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to roll call vote. Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohloff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. We are in executive session.
Perfect.
We'll now resume our regular meeting on item seven E from executive session. No action was taken. Once again, we are on item seven E approval of the twenty twenty five cereal malt beverage license renewals.
Mister Mayor, I would make a motion that we approve renewal of the cereal malt beverage licenses with the addition of the South Side Bar to that list, please.
I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion?
Just for the commission and the public, I'll be abstaining from any discussion and vote on this for any real or apparent conflicts of interest.
Any further commission discussion? Seeing none, move to roll call vote. Mister Koloff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt abstains. Myself, yes. Motion carries. We have no items for discussion. Our next item is nine A city manager's report. City Manager Marsh.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Department news from the Police Department. Kelsey Brand has graduated from the Leadership District Dickinson County Course and Assistant Chief Jason Wilkins graduated from the Heartland Certified Manager Public Manager Program last Friday. Congratulations to both of them on continuing their professional development. From the administration side, Shayla has graduated from the Municipal Clerks Certification Institute, and we have revamped how we do our pre-employment physicals and drug testing, and they're now being done in Abilene. The physicals are done through the Step Work Steps Program, which is supported by our work comp carrier, and they will pay. The work comp carrier will actually pay one hundred dollars for each of those tests. Convention and Visitors Bureau, the twenty twenty four Sunflower Summer Program was a success in Abilene. According to Kansas Tourism, the program's impact was evident across participating Abilene attractions, the Abilene and Smoky Valley Railroad, the Eisenhower Presidential Library and Museum, and the Dickinson County Heritage Center. From Public Works, the Fourteenth Street Project has received an additional award from the municipal con- the municipal concrete award from the Kansas Ready Mix Concrete Association. Again, congratulations to our engineers at Olson and Smokey Hill Construction. The project will now be entered into the National American Concrete Institute Concrete Construction Awards Program. And from community development, we're not really community development, more community wise. Last Thursday, the Family Dollar employees brought gift bags filled with chocolate items to all departments, or the departments at City Hall. I don't know if you're aware of this, but they do that leading up to Halloween when they ask customers checking out if they would like to donate towards purchasing a candy item for the area schools trunk or treat events. So they did that for city employees, and they delivered them last Thursday. The message in the Christmas card they included said, thank you for all you do for our community. We appreciate you from the community and Family Dollar. Merry Christmas. That's all for my report.
Okay, our next item is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Another second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to roll call vote. Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff?
Aye.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. We're adjourned. We'll now call to order the December ninth, twenty twenty four, City of Abilene, Kansas Land Bank Board of Trustees Meeting. Kelly, may we please have a roll call?
Mayor Ryan?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Koloff?
Here.
Commissioner Witt?
Here.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Here.
Roll call's complete.
Thank you. And then on the consent agenda, we have the agenda approval for today's agenda as well as the meeting minutes from the November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four Land Bank Board of Trustees Meeting.
I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Well, second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussions? Seeing none, we'll move to roll call vote. Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff?
Aye.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. Our next item is public comments communications. If there's anyone that would like to address the commission on an item not on our regular agenda for the Land Bank Board of Trustees Meeting, let me do so at this time. Do we have anyone that would like to address the commission on an item not on the current agenda? Seeing none, we will move into item six. Consider approval of a real estate donation agreement for the donation of three parcels of land in the Cedar Ridge Estate subdivision to the City of Abilene Land Bank in exchange for the waiver of past due special assessments on said lots. City Manager Marsh?
Commissioners, this was the item that was brought up last meeting, as you stated in your, in your opening. It's a donation of three pieces of property into the land bank from the Cedar Ridge Development. And I don't know if Thad Reynolds is on Zoom with us or not. Yep, there he is.
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, do we have any questions for staff or Thad? Aaron, did you want to kind of briefly go over the informational email you sent out just for public record?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Please, should have said that.
And I described some of this at the last meeting, but it can get a little bit confusing when we're talking about different types of taxes. So I wanted to highlight briefly just the effect of conveying property to the land bank on both general ad valorem taxes and also special assessments. So when the land bank acquires property, the, one of the unique features of the land bank that accomplishes something that no other entity can do is that the minute that the land bank takes title to any property, the statutes direct the county treasurer wipe the slate clean of any delinquent ad valorem taxes. So those are the general real estate taxes levied by the city and county and state based upon the value of property. And in addition to just wiping the slate clean from those delinquent taxes and penalties, if any, it also makes the property exempt from ad valorem taxes prospectively for the period of the land bank's ownership. So, you know, the city can take title to property as well, but if the city takes title to property, it doesn't wipe the slate clean from delinquent ad valorem taxes. So that is one of the main reasons that the land bank is unique. When it comes to special assessments, those are the special taxes levied by the city to finance public improvements such as streets and sewers and utilities and new developments typically, and they're typically assessed for a period of ten to fifteen years. If a property has delinquent special assessments at the time that it is conveyed to the land bank, unlike the general ad valorem taxes that I described, those delinquent special assessments are not wiped off automatically. Those continue to stick to the property when the land bank takes title unless payment of those is required prior to the land bank taking title. Typically, in just a normal private real estate transaction, the buyer would require the seller pay all past due taxes and assessments. Here, you don't have to do that, and if you don't do that, then those special assessments will follow the property and they'll be stuck to the property while the land bank owns it. They will also continue to accrue, but the land bank doesn't have to pay those while it owns it. If and when the land bank conveys the property back out to private ownership, then those special assessments will be due and owing. The land bank statutes provide for the city to change that outcome with respect to special assessments by adopting an ordinance that can do one of three things. It can abate the special assessments, which means that you simply wipe them off. But again, unlike ad valorem taxes where that happens automatically, that requires the city commission to adopt an ordinance that abates some or all of those assessments. It can also defer or reamortize them. Defer would mean just push them so that they're due and payable at a future date, or reamortize, change the repayment schedule. You could stretch them out so they're due over twenty years rather than ten or something along those lines. All of those things require an affirmative action by the city commission and an ordinance. And in this case, it looks like based on the staff report, there are delinquent taxes and assessments on the real estate. And so those ad valorem taxes will be wiped off, but the special assessments would not. And at a future date, if the city, if you all take title to this property, I would recommend dealing with the special assessments later as opposed to now. There's no need to deal with it now. But that, that's the effect of taking title on both ad valorem taxes and special assessments. That being said, the real estate contract before you provides that the land bank will take title subject to all of those things, which doesn't have to be that way, but that's how the contract is written presently.
Thank you. Do you, and I'm not sure who exactly to ask, but do you know the total, I guess, cost to the city by absorbing both of those special assessments and ad valorem taxes if we decided to go that route?
I'd have to ask Kerry if you know what the taxes are.
I'd say it's roughly a third. I mean, the, the way those are thirty percent of the total taxes are typically city. It's about thirty, 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 and then ten percent miscellaneous.
The only spreadsheets I pulled, excuse me, that I pulled were just for the special assessments, so I do not have the information on the past due property ad valorem property tax.
What was?
Okay.
Does anybody else have that information happen to? It looks like the total for the specials is around just under eighty-five thousand.
With the delinquent and the future due, it depends what you're talking about there. I guess while you're, while you're looking at that, I think it might be wise of us to make sure that we are attaching. I guess my preference would be to attach those to some sort of future use, even if it means spreading them back out over twenty or thirty years for a future user. I'm attempting to pull up the appraiser's office to get you that info.
Thank you. Thad, while we're looking at that, do you have any, anything you would like to add?
No, not, not at this ti- time, I don't think. I think just basically just wanting to get this kind of wrapped up so, so the city has has a full kind of jurisdiction on these lots, and they're getting to the end of the, the special assessments in a couple of years, and, and I know that people have already expressed interest in trying to take ownership of them and do things that I don't know if the city is probably wanting it to be done in that way. So I thought it'd be best for this, for me just to go ahead and donate at this point. We won't be paying the taxes or the special assessment taxes going forward, so to us, it's just kind of fast forwarding everything so the city can kind of take advantage of how they see fit to, to take control of those lots. And it's just one of those things that kind of the same situation as far as like Golden Belt. How did, how did those special assessment taxes, are they going to be remitted to the people that are building out there at this time?
They're actually being recouped through that RHID program that we implemented out there. Since it was a city, city had to bond that debt.
And that is a possibility to do here as well.
Yeah.
And Thad, you may have better info here. I just happened to pull up the, the address of seventeen oh one, and it looks like the county has four years of history, and those four years it isn't paid. So I don't know if that's, if it goes back further than that, but that's all I can see on the.
No, that, that sounds about right. Four years.
Yeah, I'll just, for the rest of the commission to hear, hear my thoughts, wanting to be intentional about this decision because there are other properties in the city that are in a similar situation. There's some lots over on the East Ridge Development by Faith Avenue that also have past due taxes. So just wanting the commission to do this eyes wide open and think of any future implications of bringing in additional property. And then also acknowledging that there's other developers in the city like the Dawson addition there behind Pizza Hut where all the taxes are paid up. And so just wanting, again, trying to think of this decision as, okay, what's in it for, what's the public good here? And the public good that I see is like getting something built on these, on these properties and something that's of high quality that, that then brings in that, that tax revenue. So if this, kind of like Thad was saying, if this speeds up the process and we're able to, where the city's able to use those incentives to move the property like what we've done out at Golden Belt, then, then I see the public good in that, acknowledging that perception where we do have developers who have paid up all their taxes. And so there can be a perception there of why did I pay my taxes when, when, when these have been, when some of these have been wiped clean? So just wanting to think out loud and, and show how I've been thinking about this. Yeah, I kind of, I, I think, I think I agree with most everything you've said there. I think the, you know, you get into a position like if you were to sell these to a private developer, no one would buy them, right? I mean, that's the situation that these are in now, and I think it'd be good to have something of a guiding light on that. You know, if you, that you mentioned the Dawson's, I think that property's been for sale on and off for five years and hasn't sold. And so just maybe thinking in your minds, if you're going to act on a categorical imperative, you know, what that looks like. Is the city just gonna accept any land donation from anyone at any time with any amount of unpaid taxes? I think that's kind of the way you should think about this. And I think actually we've had an offer in writing from the East Ridge developers to, to, to do this very same deal. So I don't know if you should be surprised to see something in writing again soon if you choose to go forward here. Right, yeah. Just wanting the, the governing body to be attentional about its decision because, yeah, there, we, we might have more of this coming.
And that, I mean, that's my biggest fear with is, is what precedent does it set for other properties that are in similar situations, may not be the exact same, but it could open up quite a can of worms. Do you have any further questions for staff or Thad at this time?
My question a little bit is, you know, as far as like the Golden Belt situation, a much larger scale than the other developers around the Abilene area. And, you know, when that happened, I think, I'm sure Rick Williamson and Mike Wilson have probably expressed their, their displeasure with the situation. You know, it gave it, I mean, basically put our developments, you know, at a huge disadvantage. And then, you know, if that precedent has already kind of been sent, sent as far as that development goes, you know, developers and builders aren't, aren't going to be interested in lots with special assessments attached to them if they've got a surplus of them to the, you know, that they can go get on, on the, on the cheap. So that's kind of where the rest of us developers kind of look at it. You know, as far as like paying the taxes and the specials and stuff, that's the motivation of not. You know, as far as like paying the taxes and the specials and stuff, that's the motivation of not paying them at this point. And so.
Yeah, sure. And I, and I fully see those two points you made. There, I think there are a couple of important caveats to note. Golden Belt. Taxpayers were already on the hook for, for that because of the failed development and the city was signed on to it. So. The, the intent behind that was to get those properties, property tax revenue producing again, so we could start paying down that debt to get it off the taxpayers' back. So that was kind of a little bit of a difference on that. But I do, yeah, I see your point.
I mean, I think realistically, it's the same situation here. I mean, we're not getting any revenue from that. I mean, it's, the, the mechanics are slightly different.
Losing.
So they, these are also bonded projects, right? Yeah, yeah. But it's just a smaller scale.
My, my concern with this is I'm not a developer, but I would assume that you would accept the risk if you're buying the properties. And then you don't pay for four years. And then you expect the city or the taxpayers to. Pay a hundred grand? That, that doesn't seem very fair to like what you said, Trevor, to the developers that are paying the taxes. And correct me if I'm wrong, but you'd said you're not going to pay it and this is a favor to the city. I, I cannot accept that and I don't agree with that.
Well, the city put us directly out of business when they're. When Golden Belt, you have no special assessments up there. So when, when that happened, you directly took the developers out of business. Because we can't compete with that. We have special assessments on our, on our lots. And now there's, all the building is going on up there and for one reason, is because there's no special assessments.
But during last commission meeting, you also did state that these have been sitting for, since 2012 or 2014. The first house wasn't finalized and completed on that until late November, December of 22.
Say again now?
In the last, in the last commission meeting, you stated that these lots had sat vacant, vacant without selling since 2012 or 2014.
Well, they've been vacant since 2007 when the plat was filed. But as far as the other development, I can't remember all the construction. I think our last spec home was probably 2015, 2016 or something like that. That's when we probably closed on it. Can't remember some of the other building, people that built up there. I can't remember the dates that they, they built up there, but. I mean, there was construction being done from the inception of the plat to probably 2016 or so. I mean, and, and you know, the market slowed down, so we didn't spec anything at the time. And then. You know, we saw, the community saw what was going up on, up north. It wasn't like nobody knew about it and nobody talked about it. So there, I mean, I had discussions with, with Rick and Mike on, on the same situation and we knew what happened with the city biting off too much than, that they can chew on a project that size up there. And, you know, it was no big secret what was going to end up happening.
When you, just to your point, I'm not sure if you were here for this, but part of the taxes that we pay for property tax is a bond issue. To pay off the specials up on that. So, I mean, we're, we're paying for the Highlands already. I mean, as taxpayers.
We're just trying to get our, our money back with the taxes.
Yeah, I mean, I hear what you're saying. It's not, it's, it's not an optimal situation. I mean, I think. The, the real losers are, are the school district and the county because they just have to eat it and don't have any say in it. So. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
And I know I'm, I'm kind of with you. It's not the, it's not an optimal outcome, but I think if we can, like I said, we, we have the ability to create an RHID on that property or some other thing to. I mean, we, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Are we able to recapture those ad valorem taxes if we? Or is it only the specials that we can recapture through that?
No, the ad valorem taxes, to the extent that you take the property subject to those, would be. Wiped off by the county treasurer. Your ability to recoup that would simply be in whatever sales price you're able to negotiate if and when the land bank ever sells it back to private ownership.
But we would be able to recapture all the specials either through a standard procedure or through an RHID. Which I think is a better outcome than sending them to tax sale and seeing what happens.
Yeah, yeah. The sale price of the lots could be how much taxes is owed on it.
Yeah, I think the challenge though is that if we're, if they're 7,500 up north, anything north of 7,500 is going to be unlikely.
Right.
Yeah.
Or something close. Yeah, we've got that discretion. So, yeah, again. I agree. Not an optimal situation. I don't like the perception it sets for those who have paid taxes and sat with empty lots in the situation. But. The ability to, of the city to turn these lots and, and get something built on them, the city's got extra tools to be able to do that. So.
I think I'm gonna, if you'll humor me for just one moment here, I think that, I mean, another thing to look at too is. Thad, you might know off the top of your head, but there's, is there 16 or 17 properties out there? Is that somewhere in the ballpark?
As far as vacant properties?
Actually ones that have been built on.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16. 16 and two of them are duplexes. So you got 18 units.
Gotcha. And I mean, looking at those properties, those are generating over, I just pulled up a random one here, $2,300 in property tax. A year and the city share of that is about a third, like I said earlier. So, I mean, there's still some significant revenue that's come from the risk that the developers took on that.
Do we have any further commission discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to approve a real estate donation agreement for the donation of three parcels of land in the Cedar Ridge Estate subdivision. To the City of Abilene Land Bank in exchange for the waiver of past due special assessments on said lots.
And I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Now, do we have any more or any further commission discussion? Seeing none, would roll call vote. Commissioner Koloff?
Aye.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
No.
Myself, no. Motion carries. Our next item is motion to adjourn.
So moved. Seconded.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any further commission discussion? Seeing none, would roll call vote. Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff?
Aye.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. We are adjourned.